Five board members are present. It is the practice of our Board of Education to begin our meetings with prayer and the pledge of allegiance. We invite you to bow your heads for prayer and stand to join us in the pledge if you choose.
Please bow your head. Lord, we respectfully ask for your guidance and wisdom as we proceed with the business before us. Keep us mindful of our purpose of providing a quality education for the students attending Taylor County Schools. Amen.
Please join me in honoring our country's flag and those who protect and defend it. My pledge is allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dr. Stallings, any adjustments or addendums to the agenda?
No, Ms. Garvin, there are not.
Thank you. Superintendent, respectfully request approval of the agenda as presented.
Moved.
Mrs. Gallo moves. Mr. Doughty seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. We do have a delegation this evening. They have graciously agreed to go after we recognize our students in the 1,000 series. So, Skills USA competition winners. Anybody here to talk about these two amazing? Do you want to stand up and tell us what you did? That'd be awesome. We would love for you to use that microphone pretty please.
Are you Isabella? Welcome, Isabella. I can introduce her a little bit. Isabella has placed with a gold certificate, correct, for your welding sculpture? Would you explain to us what that is and how it looks, et cetera?
So, Skills USA is basically where you compete with other people in a competition. And I competed in the welding showcase and I made a bouquet of flowers and got first place with it. It was very hard. There was a lot to do, but there were some other really good competitors there too, which I think everybody should have won, but it was good.
First of all, let's congratulate you for that. Before you sit down, I thought I'd ask, did you make your sculpture three-dimensional? Was it more too flat?
It was three-dimensional. I hand welded them all. Like, I gathered stuff from my shop and just created flowers out of it, like spoons or I just cut out metal and made flowers, washers, bolts.
Dad is now shopping at Home Depot to replace all those things. What are you doing with that sculpture?
I want to keep it because it's the first thing I've actually ever made in welding and I won with it.
Obviously, very good. Well, we envy your skills and congratulations to you.
Thank you.
Combining art and welding, who knew?
I believe Mr. Gallo was not able to be with us this evening, so we'll move to the next. But we did want to recognize that Luke Gallo earned a silver medal for his accomplishments on power equipment technology. So, again, another category about which I know not too much, other than keep me away from power equipment. But please, let's just, on his behalf, congratulate him.
I believe that that's incredible and a wonderful set of skills to have. And that moves us forward to the West Virginia World Language Showcase winners.
Senor, you might want to pull the mic down a little bit closer to you.
Yes.
Or maybe take the mic off of the stand if you would prefer.
Can you hear me?
We can, thank you.
Okay. So, the West Virginia World Language Showcase, this year we had the first state competition. In this competition, students did like Spanish skit, poetry, dancing, trivia, speech, folkloric dance, and modern dance, and Spanish video. Grafton High School, we took 49 students, who were the biggest participation in Spanish, and all the students placed and everything. It was amazing how Grafton placed. So, I'm going to mention who is here and who plays, because, you know, 45 students, they couldn't come because, you know, they are all-around students, they have practice, and also they were the band concert tonight, so they couldn't come. But we're going to start with Spanish skit. Peyton Freeman's here and she got third place in the skits. For the Spanish singing contest, that was really difficult. Like, my student Kelly Boyer won by one point, but we had the third place here, Serenity. She did wonderful and she got third place. For the Spanish poetry, I'm really very proud of Cassie. Yeah, Cassie? She's in Spanish one, and I told her, please compete, and actually she did it and she improved so much, and she got first place in the level one in poetry. Also, Peyton Freeman, she got first place in the poetry, in the level two, because she's in Spanish three, so she competed with Spanish three, four, and five. And Cassia, she competed in Spanish one. So, they both got first place. I forgot, Noah was in the skits too. Noah's here. He was one of the crew and thank you. For the folkloric dance, we got second place. We got first place and second place, but for the second place, we have Sophie Aston. She did a traditional dance from Venezuela, Horopo, with seven more meters. For the modern dance, we got like third place and we have Ash Alexander here. We have, yeah? And we have Cassie, she did two. And for the Spanish video, we got first place with the most popular in level one, because this was divided levels two. So, we have Bailey here. But I really very proud of my students. You know how difficult it's like to perform like in your language, and they were doing it in the second language, in Spanish, you know, do poetry, skits, singing, dancing, and they did a wonderful job. So, we really should be proud of them. Okay. So, now, we're going to do the West Virginia Seal of Bilitersy. This is like, you know, when you do completes, it's like, it's an award by the West Virginia Department of Education, where the students take a test and then they have to reach a level to be proficient in the language. So, from my, I gave the test to the juniors and seniors. There were 20 students and 18 of them passed the test, like they got the West Virginia Seal of Bilitersy. And the two that didn't, they are juniors, so they can take the test next year. So, but tonight, we just have here two of my juniors who passed. There was Alexa and Sophie. They did. So, also, I want to thank you, the board, and the, because you guys actually paid for this test, you guys paid for the stamp test to get the seal, and also for the national Spanish exam. So, that's very, very nice, the students don't have to pay. Thank you very much. Okay, so now, we'll continue. Some also, some of the students reached a higher level of proficiency and they got the global seal. But most of them, most of them were seniors. And I got still two juniors who did that global seal. So, that is, it's like a national, they can be recognized nationally. So, like I said, my students took the national Spanish exam too. That was Spanish two, three, four, and five. And some of them placed. So, tonight, we have like a silver medal. This is for one of my sophomore, Noah Smith. Also, I have two bronze medal, one for Peyton Stevens. She really was surprised with this. She never expected. And then, I have Peyton Freeman with the bronze. And for the Spanish exam, we have some honorable mentions. You guys can see in the list, like, all the students who placed and everything, but congratulations, felicitaciones, and I'm very proud of you guys.
If all the recognized students could join us up front, we'll grab a picture or two. Dr. Decker will help us with that as well. Senor, Senora Skaggs, do you want to join them, please?
Sure. I just wanted to kind of address you all from the board. So, you know, it's, it's one thing to be bilingual and know another language, but then to fully be immersed in the culture with music and poetry and dance and all of that is truly a talent and a gift. And we're so proud of all of you. And I also want to just address your teacher, Senora Skaggs, and Senora Rubio. What a testament it is to them and what they have helped empower you all to do. And thank you to the parents as well, because I know it's a lot of dedication from you all as well, and encouraging and supporting, because it's very difficult to learn another language. So, just want to congratulate everyone and also, we're very blessed to have the Spanish program here at Grafton High School and at our middle school. So, really, really want to thank you guys and congratulations.
At this time, I think we'll be recognizing the Taylor County Golden Horseshoe winners. Ms. Garvin.
All right, so I'm filling in for Mrs. Roberts tonight. She asked me to do this. She is home with a little ill child, so hopefully she feels better soon. But tonight, we are going to recognize our Golden Horseshoe winners from the middle school. So, we have three winners, and as we call your name, if you're here, if you could come up, and we have a certificate for you. So, first, we have Chase Roberts. Chase here? Well, we can still give him a round of applause. What about Leka Carr? There she is. And Wyatt Biddle. I have to get your picture. All right, I have to take your picture as well. You have this packet all set. I'm really ready to get now from Dr. Stallings.
Absolutely.
You need to face him, he's not. Well, I'll just want to take a second to address the winners. I know for a fact, everyone in this room can remember taking the Golden Horseshoe and how much work and dedication and studying it took to get through those days to prepare for that. So, I just want to say congratulations on your dedication and your effort, and we are really proud that you studied this hard and that are able to represent Taylor County in such an honor. And so, just congratulations and keep up the hard work, and we're really proud of you. I believe next, we have regional social studies winners.
I'd like to recognize the students who have participated in the Regional Social Studies Fair. I think we have three or four at least. Come on up here, if you went to Glenville State University a couple of months ago. All right, so we have four. We sent about 10 teams or groups or individual projects that had gone through the Social Studies Fair at Grafton High School back in February. And these young ladies up here, they had qualified to go to the regional fair in their category. Some of them were partners, some of, well, worked by themselves or were partners with other groups. I'm going to go ahead and recognize those who are here. We have Lucky Jones, who had worked with three other partners in the sociology group, making tracks, Private John Lovett. All right, and who else we have here? We have first, psychology, Peyton Freeman, Theodore Robert Bundy, Prince Charming or Your Worst Nightmare. So, if you're familiar with that individual, that's Ted Bundy, more commonly known. And then, we have a political science group with Jaden Young and Alyssa Larry, as well as Lily Krim. Title of their project was Graduate to War. Private First Class Johnny Edward Prusak. Did I pronounce that right?
Prusak.
All right, thank you. All right, so, we sent about 10 to regionals, and we did send a few of those groups to Charleston, West Virginia in April to go ahead and present at the West Virginia State Social Studies Fair. And I'll tell you the results on that once I find it on this paper. All right, so, State Social Studies Fair, we have second place in economics group, Kevi Sykes and Sierra Persinger, Let's Go Thrifting. We have a first place geography group, Lily Roy and Michael Nickemeyer for Changing Climate, Changing Africa. Third place political science group, two ladies up here, as well as Lily, for their project, Graduate to War. And we have a third place psychology individual, Peyton Freeman, for Theodore Robert Bundy. So, these students had worked in class and they worked outside of class, working on their projects. Want to recognize Brittany Shimmy there, who had some of her students work on projects in her classes. I had students work on the projects in my classes as well. Mrs. Bartlett, our librarian, working on projects, specifically veterans' projects. So, we did integrate some classwork into this, and some other students had volunteered to be part of the social studies, Social Studies Fair project. And those eighth graders who got the Golden Horseshoe, expect you to enter next year's Social Studies Fair. It'd be a great opportunity to work on your social studies skills. All right, there you go.
Couple of comments for you ladies.
Ladies, wait just a second. Mr. Taylor, one of our board members would like to speak to you.
A couple of comments. What you were doing is developing life skills, and congratulations to you for being involved in psychology and social studies and so forth. Again, life skills for you to develop. Thank you for your participation. Congratulations.
Ms. Garvin and everyone, I, at one time, was asked to be a judge at the state level. I did that with enthusiasm, but I tell you what, these prizes, these places that you see tonight is an indication of hard work and skill, because the competition continues to be more difficult and more difficult. And at the state level, you are confronted with a lot of heavily researched projects, and so, congratulations to them.
I continue to be awed. Every week, we have remarkable students across a wide range coming here to remind us what we're here to support, and I am so thrilled and proud and cannot wait for the future that these students will create for us. So, thank you to all of the students, to all of the support that the students get from teachers, from parents, from extended family, from friends pushing each other to do better. You are wonderful and you are the reason we are here. Thank you. And now, go run in the rain. Thank you so much.
We'd love to see a picture, we'd like to see a picture of her work as well, would you sometime?
Yeah. And... Do your teachers send us a picture? Oh, you have a picture?
It'd be great.
I know.
She should have brought that. We were very excited to see it. What do you mean she doesn't have it with her?
Sorry, we've been waiting.
By the way, couldn't you go to Anna Jarvis Elementary?
Oh, nice.
That is so nice.
The Anna Jarvis Elementary.
What was that? Anna Jarvis?
What?
Tell us what you're doing.
I like it.
Go ahead.
At this point, excuse me.
I'm pretty good at it.
Thank you.
I have 41 years of experience.
Thank you.
You guys can see in the list, like, all the students who placed and everything, but congratulations, felicitaciones, and I'm very proud of you guys.
If all the recognized students could join us up front, we'll grab a picture or two. Dr. Decker will help us with that as well. Senora, Senora Skaggs, do you want to join them, please?
Sure.
Congratulations, everyone.
I just wanted to kind of address you all from the board. So, you know, it's, it's one thing to be bilingual and know another language, but then
I have forty-one years of experience with that.
Hey, at this point, we do have a delegation. The spokesperson is Ms. Bethany Knight. Ms. Knight, I will remind you that as a delegation, you can speak to us. Unfortunately, we are not in a position to speak back. So, for better or for worse, that is what it is right now. You are being livestreamed and you do have a five-minute time limit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Knotts passed out to the board members what I'm going to be reading along with some other letters from staff members that could not be here today. I'm known to speak really fast, so I'm gonna try to slow myself down. I am speaking on behalf of the Anna Jarvis faculty and staff to formally request the reinstatement of the Dean of Students position at Anna Jarvis Elementary School for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. As we continue to prioritize both academic success and student well-being, the need for dedicated behavior and administrative support has become increasingly evident. Anna Jarvis serves four hundred and eighty students. To date, our administrative team has entered two hundred and sixty-three incident, behavior-related incidents into WEVS. Each of these incidents require extensive time and attention, including investigation, interviewing students, reviewing video footage, speaking with parents, facilitating in-person conferences, and ensuring accurate categorization of documentation according to state policy. Let that sink in a second. Four hundred and eighty students, two hundred and sixty-three incidents. A further breakdown shows students accumulated thirty-five incidents for a total of forty-nine days of OSS and forty incidents accumulating twenty-three days of ISS, with the bulk of the incidents being reported as Level III infractions. Many of those instances are frequently occurring in the lower grade levels. Beyond data entry, administrators must also review student behavior histories to determine appropriate consequences, collaborate with staff, and maintain transparency and consistency. These responsibilities, while vital, are significantly impacting the time available for instruction, instructional leadership, teacher support, and proactive engagement with the students. A Dean of Students will provide targeted leadership and behavior management, conducting most of the groundwork while navigating through what could be handled at classroom level versus at the administrative level. The position would also foster a stronger student relationship and early intervention in behavioral patterns, leading to a safer, more positive school environment for all. Additionally, Anna Jarvis has a high number of special education students compared with other elementary schools in our district. This directly impacts our administrative workload due to significant numbers of IEP meetings, SAT interventions, creating sped schedules, and coordinating of services requiring to meet individual needs and stay compliant with legal and educational standards. These cumulative responsibilities leave our administrative administration with limited capacity for focus on instructional leadership and proactive school improvement. Despite serving a high-needs, high-enrollment population, Anna Jarvis lacks equitable support services and personnel, such as nurses, counselors, and community and school positions. Even if, even if we were to equitably divide support staff in the county, it would still not cover the need for a Dean of Students. The addition of the Dean of Students would provide critical behavior and logistical support to help ensure consistency and discipline, allow earlier interventions, and support teachers in maintaining effective classroom environments. I know that some saw Mrs. Williams, our former Dean of Students position as trivial due to the lack of information regarding her role, but her departure left an immense hole at Anna Jarvis. A Dean of Student in an elementary school with a focus on PBIS or Positive Behavioral Intervention and Supports plays a crucial role in promoting positive behavior, ensuring a safe learning environment, and supporting both students and staff. Here is a detailed breakdown of key components of this position. PBS Leadership and Implementation. Lead PBS Framework serves as the primary leader in implementing and sustaining PBIS practices school-wide. Tiered Support Systems. Tier One: Support Universal Strategies for All Students, such as Behavior Expectations, Reward Systems. Tier Two and Three: Coordinate Interventions for Students Needing Additional Behavioral Supports. Data Monitoring: Analyzing Discipline Data to Track Trends and Guide Decision-Making. Use Tools Like Zoomy. PBIS Team Coordination. Chair or Co-Chair the PBIS Committee. Facilitate Regular Team Meetings to Evaluate Program's Effectiveness. Another, or another component would be Student Behavior Management. Behavior Interventions, Behavior Coaching, and Discipline Oversight. Not to Assign, But Administer Discipline, such as ISS or Detention. Align with School Policy and PBIS Philosophy. Restorative, Not Punitive. Staff Support and Professional Development. Teacher Coaching: Supporting Staff in Classroom Management Strategies, Modeling PBS-Aligned Behavior Enforcement. Training for New Staff. Providing Professional Development. Sessions on PBS Trauma-Informed Practices, De-escalation Techniques, Et Cetera. Collaboration. Work Closely With Classroom Teachers, School Counselors, Social Workers, and Paraprofessionals. The Taylor County Board of Ed will provide PRO or SRO to each schools for the twenty-five, twenty-six year school year. But their allowable use in each building is highly limited and none of those tasks listed above fit into the required job descriptions. Our goal is to ensure every child receives a high-quality education and a safe, structured, and supportive learning environment. A Dean of Students position is not a luxury, it's a necessity to meet the demands placed on our staff and serve our students equitably. I respectfully urge the Board of Education to consider the approval of this role for Anna Jarvis in the upcoming school year. Thank you for your continued support and for all you do to serve our students. Thank you.
Thank you.
Could we have this issue placed on a future agenda for discussion, please?
Alright, I think that that's more than reasonable. Thank you. When it is placed on the agenda, can you let the presenter know so that if they would like to return to hear the discussion, that they could be here?
Sure.
Or listen in on...
Sure.
Teams. I believe, thank you very much for your time this evening. It's six thirty-four, so if you're going to the high school band concert, I'll let you go. And I believe that that brings us to the superintendent's updates.
Thank you, Ms. Gallo. Excuse, I did it again and I'm so sorry. I apologize, Ms. Gallo, and I apologize, Ms. Garvin. Thank you, Ms. Garvin. I'll start again and I'll be brief. As you can see, it's a one-page list. This, I knew we had an awful lot of students to be recognized and so I tried to keep it per your request before to keep it into one page with, with bulleted issues. Quick update, I wanted to give you the, the total that I was provided as a result of Thursday's Grafton High School Awards and Scholarship Assembly, which was extremely successful, during which we had in excess of five hundred fourteen thousand, four hundred and thirty-three dollars awarded to our students. That does not include the additional eligibility for, beyond that scholarships where they can be repetitive and repeated and requested subsequently. That ranged to approximately two million dollars. We have a fine group of students that are graduating this year. No surprise, but they were most impressive in all the awards. It took three hours to recognize all the accomplishments that day. The next item I have is just an update, the envelope project for Flemington Elementary School. We did, as per the schedule, have the bid opening and that was successful as well. And that Tuesday, the sixth of May, we had visitation from some representatives from the school building authority who wanted to visit the site. They also took a few moments to come and go to visit the Anna Jarvis construction site as well. And lastly, of that area, the concession stand, I have not received any, any additional updates since my, our last meeting. Moving on to number three, future location, transportation maintenance departments, fuel tank purchases has been started. Once they are, that's been finalized and we do have the next step in the process where Mr. Martin will be assisting with that, to making additional recommendations. Also mentioned previously, we're, the, once we are near a full evacuation of the other site, we can then have, prepare for the sale of that location. Once we bring up, that would include bringing in the tanks that are in the ground, above ground and disposed with. The two departments, as I mentioned in passing there, that are currently working on the process to eventually achieve occupancy. Speaking of new Anna Jarvis construction, we are making progress every day. God willing, the weather will continue to cooperate.
It looks like a muddy mess.
Well, one would think, and indeed on certain days, Mr. Taylor, that is very accurate. But I can assure you, we receive photographs of progress each day, including the occasional photograph of the rain gauge that is purposely placed there. This week looks like a wet one, weather-wise, and so we can anticipate that it's going to continue to challenge the construction company. They have not been daunted, they continue to take, make progress and assure me that there, it's gonna happen. We have, since the expansion, the, as that site grows and we're now moving north, which took up more of the oval parking spaces nearest the flagpole, that is no longer available. And staff have started to utilize the property that was made available as a result of the MOU with the Catholic Diocese. And they are doing that, they did a practice run with, with no issue and has continued to be a very workable process. We have obtained, I think I mentioned once before, we have also obtained for future use, probably in the fall, when we start needing to move, eventually we'll continue to grow, construction site, we'll start needing some overflow for staging appearance for pickup. And the Church of the Good Shepherd has entered into the, what we'll call the third of our memorandum of understandings that we've engaged. We have both that one, the Catholic Diocese, as well as the Preston-Taylor community down where the former Chrislip Motor Lodge has existed. So, that'll be all in process once we need that. And lastly, Camp Tolls, property we, per my last information I shared with you, we originally learned after we checked all the, the tax, tax maps et cetera, we learned that in fact there were nine pieces of property that make up the Toll Love Camp Tolls. And we are currently, we have a survey company conducting that for us and we'll have more of that information once that's completed. And most importantly, in addition to all that information, I want to give you the dates and reminders. Please know that Sunday, the eighteenth, is the honor graduate banquet sponsored by our local Rotary organization. And following that, on Wednesday, the twenty-first, is the senior sermon. Then that's at seven PM. On Monday, the twenty-sixth, don't forget the Memorial Day Parade. I wanted to give you a heads-up there, as you remember, they had asked permission to utilize the Grafton High School campus as a state, as the staging for that parade. And I have been informed as recently as last evening at the Memorial Day Parade Committee meeting that at eight-thirty, they will be closing Riverside Drive and Yates Avenue, which in my mind is one street, depends on which you, and you entered, what you call it. I believe the whole thing is Yates Avenue officially, but some people just reference that. So, from Route fifty to Route one nineteen, that will be closed at eight-thirty. Likewise, at nine-thirty, the main street or the main route of the parade, starting at the intersection of Yates and one nineteen is the, where the Exxon Station and across the street, just at the bridge, across the street where the Fire Department now occupies that property. From that point, all the way around through Main Street, through town, over the bridge, which I believe it goes to Front Street up on the east end where Elizabeth Cather Towers is located, and then down Front Street, all the way to the bridge that crosses back to what we call Gump's Grocery Store and on through Walnut Street to the, to the cemetery. All of that will be closing at nine-thirty. So, if in fact you have that same, that favorite spot, please make sure that you are there before you can't get through roadwise. That will be an extremely different experience for many, many people because we're reversing, the committee has reversed the direction of the parade. And that is the result of the difficulty with obtaining a closure of the CSX Railroad during the parade hours. They have tried, but it was, they were unsuccessful. I'm sure it'll be positive. God willing, the rain will happen this week and stop, so it could be a dry, but I can't predict. Anyway, there you have that information and I appreciate your time. Also, please note that with intentionality, we have attached some monthly school updates, which is often something that provides to us. And I'm excited to tell you that both the schools, West Taylor Elementary School and the Taylor County Middle School were kind enough to give us information that focuses on academics. Something we should be looking at with the student achievement and performance as well as all the other things that we recognize, both creative arts and athletics. With that, I'm going to stop and thank you for your time. Oh, I didn't, I almost forgot one. I'm so sorry. Don't forget that. On Tuesday, you are needed as a board to be a part of the Grafton High School commencement ceremony as we were last year. I apologize, Mrs....
What time you want us there?
I beg your pardon?
Mrs. Schumaker said by six thirty.
What time do you want us there?
I believe that last year, we, as long as we are there by six-thirty, we will be fine. And I believe as we did last year, we will assemble at the Mary Battle Studio. I apologize, Mrs. Gallo and Mrs. Knotts for overlooking that tonight because we have two of our board members who will be celebrating graduates as well. And correct, congratulations to that. Thank you, Ms. Gallo and board members.
And Mrs. Knotts heads...
She just wanted me to let you know that she was headed to her son's...
Yep.
...performance.
No worries. Thank you very much. Okay. Board member updates. I just have, there is a packet in front of you about our self-appraisal. I sent out the link. Most of us have responded. And as soon as I have five answers, I will get that forwarded to Dr. Stallings and to the state and then we can schedule a meeting to chat about that. Anybody else? Committee meeting reports? Alright, let's move into the two thousand series. Superintendent respectfully requests approval of the minutes for the regular meeting on April twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-five and the special meeting on May sixth, twenty-twenty-five. Mr. Taylor moves. All second? All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. We have number of policies and codes. Two in the first reading, three in the second reading, no, more than three in the second reading.
On the cellphone use, twenty-two seventy-seven, at the appropriate time, I'd like to move that that include the words "or in backpacks."
Are you referencing location for storing them during the day?
Yes.
Alright, thank you. And your wording would be "or in backpacks"?
Correct.
Thank you.
Anybody else have, do we want to have a bigger discussion about that at the next, on its second reading? Or does anybody else have any questions or concerns about any of these things in their first or second reading? As that would be...
Judge seem to be a very prominent topic even with our legislators, so...
Alright, if we can plan on expanding that discussion at the next meeting.
Would you like that eight thousand series or just where it sits? Either would be appropriate.
I was saying, we could probably just do it where it sits.
Okay.
Alright, moving on, we've got an MOU. Superintendent respectfully requests approval of twenty-two ninety-nine... Superintendent respectfully requests approval of 2299 in the 2000 series. Superintendent respectfully requests approval of items 3187 through 3197 in the 3000 series. Mrs. Gallo moves. Mr. Taylor seconds. Questions, comments, concerns?
Yeah, I did have a, just a question. Just really on the timing of 3190. I know it's a capital improvement, but I know we have a lot of other outstanding needs as well. I just kinda wanted to voice my concern with, not that I'm not in support of that, but is this the appropriate time?
I mean, it's the one capital improvement that the middle school had asked for. They hadn't, they didn't really ask for any other major improvement project. And Dr. Stallings agreed to prioritizing that since that was their only really, real request.
I think you should recall, we've just finished doing their upper, the, what would be the original parking areas. And I believe that the intent was that, having done the lockers and the gymnasium and the bleachers and the, all those improvements and the replacement of all the cafeteria tables and everything seems to be coming into pristine appearance. And they were just, they saw that as.
Well, I can give you, the justification as to why they asked for that is that they had to close that several times when it snowed because it couldn't be plowed, which then caused parent pickup to have to be changed in the wintertime back on the main drag because it's, it was gravel. So that was another rationale for why they wanted that done. So then that could be cleared and parent pickup could continue there.
That's certainly valid rationale.
Yeah, that was their rationale for asking for that request.
Okay.
That has definitely improved all of the concerns that were raised last year. Or when we were compromising the entrances, the line, as you remember, Spring Hill Road was blocking.
Right.
That, that price also includes the, the lining of that and also a culvert that is DOH approved. We have, we're working on a permit with the DOH to make sure the flow from the, the top of the hill goes down a culvert and not into anywhere else. So that includes that. That also includes the lining and it includes the paving. Just so you know, the whole scope of the project.
Yep. No, thank you for the clarification, just because.
Totally understand.
There have been other.
Appreciate you being frugal as well.
Things that we have discussed and other things that I've had constituents reach out to me about. And I just, just want to advocate for, again, our funds and just make sure that, you know, we're being fair in assessing things, you know, for all of our facilities, just to, as far as timing, so. And again, not that I wasn't in support, just more clarification. Thank you. Any additional questions in the 3000 series? We have a motion on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. 4000 series, financial, budget supplements and vouchers payable. How we doing, Mr. Dolan?
Everything's going well. Inside your packet, you should have received a, some budget supplements that, for a few items, some of these were to add in some budget adjustments for additional revenue that we've collected through the year. We had to make an adjustment to our PEIA revenue. That's not very uncommon. It happens when the state goes through the budget and they make that adjustment. So that's in there. And a few entries for the capital improvement projects that we just discussed. And then we did receive two grants, one for national board reimbursement and one for revenue for the alternative ed program that we receive every year. Other than that, that's all the budget supplements. And then you received a packet for a, for all the bills that we've paid, with the meetings being back to back this week. The department was trying to get everything up to the last minute, so this week and next week, you'll receive another packet for all the checks and bills that have to be paid and approved.
Any additional questions for finance? Superintendent respectfully requests approval of the items in the 4000 series. Mr. Doughty moves. Mr. Taylor seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. 5000 series, student matters, personnel matters, legal matters. You have some employment, some extracurricular, or extra duty, professional sub, summer employment, position creation, resignation, transfers, and additional summer employment. Superintendent respectfully requests approval of items 5542 through 5559 in the 5000 series. Mr. Taylor moves.
I will second. What questions?
Mrs. Gallo, second. We have questions.
Yes, I have questions on the creation of the weapons detection for 5449 and 5550. Just really, just for clarification, what, what type of training will they get? Will they get training from the vendor of the equipment? Or will that be our administrative staff who? I'm just, I'm just curious, since this has a lot of legal, probably things that we want to consider. I just wanted to check.
Right, that's, your question is a good one. The professional development, with regard to the, how it works, how to operate them would be appropriate. To bring in the representatives of the company. The administrators would have had that training and that was very helpful. But your point is well taken, then that would be a part of the implementation or the initiation of the process with these individuals.
Okay. And then there's gonna be the two locations, right? So, cause the.
Do you mean two different campuses?
Yeah, because the vacancy notice, it just had Grafton High School, but it's gonna be both, right?
Right, we, items 49, or 5549 and 5550 are.
Gotcha.
They're identical, just the locations change.
Okay.
And then, I'm sorry, I have a question about that because are we creating six of these at each? Okay.
Total 12.
For a total of 12.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So then it's.
Yeah, on your agenda, it says six at Grafton High School, six at Taylor. We just then copied two pages of the, the same exact job description.
So then it's $1,620 times 12.
That'd be correct.
I did that math before I came, but I don't know it off the top of my head. And then. I had other questions here. Hang on. Get back there.
Will all of these? Let me rephrase that. How do these contracts pay out? Like, I know, like, sometimes a coach or whatever won't get paid until the end of the season. Given that this is an everyday.
Mr. Dolan is ready to answer that very question.
Does that get broken up and prorated over their paychecks? Does it get?
I believe during the discussion, they were going to provide us with a, almost like a timesheet for when that was done and that would be paid out. Maybe every, just like, just like our Route 2, like our two timesheet schedule that we have for all employees. So if they did that job, you know, four or five times in that two week period, then they'd get paid for those hours at that time.
I think to clarify, the frequency, remember, is going to be random, so that they're, and so that would depend on?
Yeah, my question was slightly broader. We're creating 12, 16 different positions here, total, in this. Nurses and counselors and honor society and detection monitoring and what have you. So, because some of them are like, here's the timeframe that it happens, like a coach has a season. Boom, boom. These are all year. These are maybe extended year. But they're not necessarily every single day. How does that work for them? But if it's a timesheet situation where we did it on Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, here's my timesheet, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, it gets added to my check, then that's.
And that's, it'll be addressed as per the pay period that's happening at the time and it'll just be incorporated into that.
That is correct.
Okay.
Or this, I, I want to think, I think you're also asking, so some of them are stipend. So how we do a, not an hourly rate, you do a stipend by like a semester and a semester.
Like the coaches you're referring to, that's usually till the, at the end of that season is how, is what.
Okay.
I think that's the athlete.
Yeah, so.
I think they're all listed as stipend, right?
I'd have to go back.
Yeah. The nursing, I know for sure the nursing, so the we, the weapons detection is not, it's, it's listed as an hour at how much they're gonna make an hour. So that's where Jonathan's saying they would write down the time period of, because, because this isn't gonna be necessarily divided evenly among the school year. It's gonna say, you might do it four times in a month, you might do it two times in a, in a short month. They're just gonna write their hours and then they'll get paid their hours. Whereas the two positions that are nursing and like the Hispanic position, the counseling support facilitator, the nursing, all those, those are stipends. So they, what's how payroll typically does stipends is half and half.
I, I see where, on the job description, you're asking about the stipend because it says stipend. Instead of just, instead of pay ra, rate of pay, it says stipend, but it's, it's an hourly.
On the weapons detection.
On the job description, it says.
Maximum 1620.
Right, but the word before that is stipend.
That's just the typical, yeah, but it's, 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 yeah.
So when you, you start to see that again and again, so it's a.
Yeah. Which that can be clarified on the posting. That's just the type of what, when they look, they, when they pulled an old one and they created the job description, they just didn't change that instead of pay rate. But that one's an hourly, as it's described in the description, it's an hourly rate.
Could that be broken up into maybe quarterly rather than?
That's a Mr. Dolan question.
Rather than annually or by semester?
The, the actual stipend ones that might only pay.
That way they wouldn't have to wait quite so long to get at least a little something.
So like the, like the National Hispanic Honor Society, is that what you're referring to?
Well, like the nurse, or the counselor, who are obviously working.
We have done, we have done that in the past where it, like, you do the first semester and we pay half and then, so.
Could, could we potentially look at that, like, the fir, yeah, fourths, quarterly, six week, I don't, necessarily six weeks or nine weeks?
Yeah.
And just, it just feels like a lot.
It's a matter of adjusting the form that I send out.
Okay.
It's that simple, so.
Wonderful. So I. Okay. So I also have, I'm assuming for the nurse support facilitator, the funding source is blank. Is that from the levy as well? Okay. And then.
Again, none of these have gone live. These are all just only your eyes only, so.
Okay. Excuse me. For, for both of those, the counselor and the support, this is for all schools?
Yeah, yes.
That's a lot of, again, it's a lot of students.
Well, it's just the extra support for the, the current positions that they hold. So this is to help alleviate some of the duties that the school nurses and the school counselors are already doing. So to help get some catch-up work done before school starts is what that is doing. I will say that, like, so when we're looking at funding, we already over nursing, I, I, funding what we're doing, but we still hear them that they still need some extra help. So this was a way to give them, an additional person to help some of that get caught up in certain times when we're doing vaccinations and those types of reporting. So they can kind of get some of that done on the front end through this person. So it's still going to be ultimately that, that individual school nurse's responsibility to ensure that, but this person's gonna help fill some of that need to give a little bit extra support through that time period.
And again, I'm just asking for clarification and just to help me understand. Other counties, do they have more than one of these individuals or is this?
Not from my knowledge, in my, where I've come from before, we have one of these. We had one person at the, at the county level that kind of was in, not the same exact title, but did similar things.
Okay. I'm just, again, asking because I, I can understand that that's a lot. And especially with the immunizations, there's a timeframe, they have to get those in, that's a state, you know, requirement and. Yes.
That's why, that's why we brought this as an extracurricular that could be done some over the summertime to help get some of that work started before school even would happen, before we get there.
And then with our counselor, with those records and the summer enrollment, I mean, both of those positions. And, and I know we heard earlier, just about the volume of, you know, work. I just want to make sure that we're adequately supplying with resources that definitely are needed and is very important, you know, our service personnel or, and professional personnel are important to us. We just want to make sure. I think I'm good. All right, any additional questions for the 5000 series? There's a motion on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. That brings us to the 8000 series, board member discussion and comments. And it is 7:04, so we'll go ahead with this discussion if you'd like, Mr. Taylor.
Well, I'm not entirely certain. I wouldn't just as soon discuss this when we were all here. But what I really want to get is a flavor of this board's support for such a program. You know, I, I know we need to find a location. I know that there will be some expenditure that, that is gonna have to be made to build such a facility. You know, but an indoor swimming pool is something we owe our, I've said numerous occasions before, we owe our swim team something like this. You know, we've, we've had a successful swim team that has to go out of town to practice and go to meets. And, you know, I'd like to have some encouragement from the rest of the board to pursue other avenues of funding in addition to us and other participation. I have been in contact with at least one city council member who is encouraging and thinks that the city council might in some way participate. I'd like to approach the county commission. I'd like to approach Lear Mine. There are others in the community that might want to be supportive if they knew the school board was fully behind such a, a program. So, you know, that's, that's some of my thoughts.
I mean, I don't think any of us, I'm gonna back up, I don't object to a swimming pool. I think. I think we have some facilities that need a little more immediate attention. I love the idea of getting the county commission involved because then, then it's not our pool, it's Taylor County's pool. And I think that would be a boon for not only the children in this community, but for the entire community. I guess, how do we figure out how much that's gonna cost without putting out the money to figure out how much that's gonna cost? I guess, how do we figure out how much that's going to cost without putting out the money to figure out how much that's going to cost? And, and then where do we rank that in the rest of the capital improvement? And, and not capital improvement, just the, the smaller day-to-day things, you know, do, we have, we have sheds and concession stands and equipment lockers and a chunk of the high school in the Claire B. that needs a significant amount of attention. And I know we talked a little bit about this at the budget meeting and I wasn't there for that discussion. But where does this rank in those? Because this, this is not a hundred thousand dollar project. This is a, a million to two and a half. So.
We, we.
Is a guess.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to catch you off.
I, I would love to be able to give our swim kids a place to swim year round. I don't know exactly how to do that.
Well, I'd, I'd like to, in addition to that, hire a swimming coach to, or PE coach, whatever, to, to teach swimming lessons to our kids in all of our grades at some point as part of their physical education. You know, I think that's, that would be a functional use of, of such a pool. Not only that, it needs to be available to the community as well on nights that, that school functions aren't using it or the swim team or whatever. But, you know, again, I want a flavor of the support of this board for such an activity. And, you know, I don't think we should say, oh, we're going to put three million dollars into it and build it next year. No, I, I'm, I'm thinking longer, long-term and I'm thinking, but if you don't start somewhere sometime, you'll never get something done.
No, I'm fine. He was looking for the board. I'm not, I'm just.
Oh, I thought you had started to say something, sorry. I, I'm, I kind of feel along the same as Ms. Garvin, that I do feel this is a need for our students. I know I've brought it up before and I keep bringing it up, but Claire B. really needs the attention that it's, it's needed. And we have other areas and facilities like Mrs. Garvin had mentioned, as well as, you know, things at our middle school, facilities and, and buildings and structures and, and things like that that, that are already there, that we need to be taking care of as those things arise. I, I need more data because I did try to do a little bit of research. I think there's only, what, two schools that I'm aware of in the state that have a pool. I think it's Willing Park and I forget what the other one was. But again, I don't know, I need.
Maybe Canol County, but I'm not a hundred percent sure.
No, I don't think they do now.
In the northern panhandle that's been.
Brook County and southern, southern portion of the state, I believe, has one.
Okay.
They've been in the process of building one for the last five years.
Again, what, excuse me?
I said, one of the counties in the northern panhandle have been in the process of building one for the last five years.
Right.
So they, they had the funds, but is, they've run into, run into issues, so they're still in the planning phase.
So that's, that's my only concern because I know this adds an, another layer of liability in legal that I would want to research before jumping in. I feel like I want to know a little bit more about it as far as research goes. You know, I would want our legal friends to weigh in on that, what, you know, if we were exploring this option, what that meant as well. I do think that this is a hu, this would be a huge project and we would, I, I don't, I don't think this is something that we could solely be the majority responsibility of. I think that partnering maybe or collaborative, but I don't think that, I don't know, I could be wrong. I have to defer to probably Mr. Dolan on that as far as financially, that we would have that big of a responsibility there with that.
In fact, Ms. Gallo, if I might interject, Mr. Dolan has been investigating some of that and made some contacts with a, a local facility to, to ask them questions about operations and budgets and those kind of things. And he might be able to share that. I think he's prepared to talk with you. Maybe not an official report, but what he's learned so far. Mr. Dolan?
Just in speaking with the manager of that facility, he, he allowed me to stop by and take a look at the budget that he's given for the year. And that facility loses money on that, on the swimming part. If they didn't have the other parts that were attached to it, then they would not be able to support that. They spend, they spend a little over four hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year just on lifeguards. So this facility, you would have to have, if you're wanting to have it open, you know, twelve hours a day, you know, eight in the morning, twelve at night, something like that, then, you know, it would, there would have to be something to generate the funds to, you know, to have that facility being, you know, staffed because you have to have somebody there to obviously be a lifeguard. You have to have somebody that manages, you know, manages the equipment that goes along with that. So there's another added, added cost. Then you'll have to have support staff that'll, you know, work the front desk, so-called, you know, to make sure there's not people, you know, coming in and out of their own free will. So, but like I said, those are some, some of the things that we have to think about. You talk about legally, it would definitely be an increase to our insurance because of the liability of it. And again, depending on where it's located, if it's freestanding or if it's attached to a school, there would have to be, you know, it would have, there have to be more safeguards put in place just for the fact that it's being, you know, at the side of the school because, because of that risk. So, but like I said, there's a lot of things, there's a lot of things that have to be considered. He brought, brought to light, like, the health department, they have, they have a set of rules that you have to follow before you can, you know, open the facility.